We'll call the meeting of our planning commissioners at work. August 25th to 10:00 AM.
Commissioner Steinberg.
President.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Commissioner Cumberly.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff is excused this evening. Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Vice Chair Flores is also excused this evening. Chair Donaldson.
Here.
We have a quorum of five commissioners.
Join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is the time on the agenda for public comments for items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this point? Seeing no one, we'll go on to the action recaps. We have two sets of minutes from two different meetings, so let's just take them separately.
Do you move approval of the first set?
You mean the arts one? The where we met at the Arts Center?
July 8th.
Can we even approve?
Obviously.
Can we even approve them if there are only three of us who were here that are available?
Yeah, can I? There are three. Three out of five. Present?
Nope.
It would be majority of those.
There were four commissioners at the meeting, and of the four, there are only three that are here.
Okay. The word is you can approve it because it would be three of the five of you.
That are present.
That are present and voting, assuming you all vote to approve it.
Okay, so I would second that.
Are there any objections? I move approval. You should approve it without objection.
So we had a motion by Commissioner Sherman, a second by Commissioner Cumberly, and we have two abstentions, right? Commissioners Cardoza and Steinberg.
Right.
And the other three voting yes.
And then our regular meeting was July 28th, our last meeting. We have minutes from that.
Move approval.
Second.
Any objections?
So again, Commissioner Steinberg would need to abstain from that one.
So we have four out of.
Four eyes and one abstention.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our director's report.
Okay. First, regarding the recent actions of the city council, they've actually had four meetings since you last met. Two special meetings and two regular meetings. On July 29th, they held a very brief meeting to amend their calendar of regular meetings and added a regular meeting on Monday, August 8th. The regular meeting of previously scheduled for August 2nd had been canceled earlier in the year. So then, at the August 8th regular meeting, the council passed a number of resolutions that related to a ballot measure regarding how the city contracts for city attorney services. And as a result of their actions, that measure will appear on the ballot for the Emeryville voters on November 8th. At the other regular meeting in August, August 16th, the council approved the necessary findings and approved the demolition of the Golden Gate Lock and Key Building at 3706 San Pablo. That vote was three to one. Vice Mayor West voted no, and Mayor Davis was absent. The council also approved a parklet in the street in front of Farley's Cafe on 65th Street. For those of you not familiar with this concept, a parklet is like a platform that's built in the street in what would otherwise be a parking space, or in this case, a driveway, to sort of expand the pedestrian realm. This parklet will be, will function as outdoor seating for Farley's. It had previously been approved by the Transportation Committee because it is out in the street. And other than that, we are processing it administratively as a sidewalk cafe permit.
Charlie, isn't Farley's in Oakland?
No.
That's still Emeryville there?
That's Emeryville, yeah.
Really? Okay.
Yep. If you walk, you know, a couple of feet east of Farley's, you'll be in Oakland. But the city boundary is at Vallejo Street further south. But at Peabody Lane, Vallejo Street has a jog. So there's some property on the east side of Vallejo Street, north of Peabody, that is still in Emeryville.
Okay, thank you.
That includes Farley's. Concerning redevelopment, there were a number of items on the August 16th council agenda which were continued because, as you may have heard, the State Supreme Court has agreed to hear the lawsuit that's been brought by the California League of Cities and the California Redevelopment Association against the two bills that would eliminate redevelopment agencies and then allow them to stay in business if they make voluntary extortion payments to the state. And the court has also stayed certain provisions of those bills. So the items that related to redevelopment continuing on the council agenda were continued until the court case is settled, which is anticipated to occur on or before January 15th. Then, at the other special meeting on August 25th, which was just an hour ago, the Community Development Commission, the city council sitting as the Community Development Commission, passed a resolution where they adopted the enforceable obligations payment schedule for the redevelopment agency. That will allow the agency to continue to pay their bills until the court case is settled. It was at first thought that the Supreme Court's stay precluded that action from being necessary, but then it was clarified that, no, you still have to do that, and you have to do it by the end of August, which meant that the city council had to hold a special meeting to do it. And virtually every other city in California is in the same situation, and all their councils are all having special meetings in order to pass this payment schedule. Oakland, I understand, did it this afternoon. In other news, the zoning update is forging ahead. The Steering Committee met two days ago on Tuesday, August 23rd, and reviewed the dimensional intensity and density standards and the point system that the committee had previously reviewed for bonus height FAR and residential density. But this time, it's in code format, so you can see actually what it will look like when it is in the new code. The next meeting will be on September 27th, and at that point, the committee will review and provide comments and hopefully tentatively approve the new use classification system and the matrix indicating uses that are permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited in each zone. Staffs is also working on a detailed outline for the entire code, and that will be used by Diet and Bati as the framework for putting the whole thing together. There, as I previously announced, there is a festival to celebrate the completion of the Park Avenue improvements, and that is on Thursday, September 15th, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM in the plaza down at the end of the street. So I hope to see you all there. The community workshops that I previously told you about for the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory have now all happened. The one in Emeryville was on Monday, August 8th, at the Hilton Garden Inn. The mayor and the city manager spoke. Comments were also made by a number of department heads, including myself, and I think, I believe I saw a number of you there as well. There is a workshop this Saturday, oh, I brought flyers, on the Center of Community Life. I want to pass these around. If you haven't already seen this, the workshop is this coming Saturday, August 27th, from 9:30 to 12:30 at Annie Yates'. So anyone who's interested in the planning for the Center of Community Life is welcome to attend that workshop. The Joseph Emory Park is open. The fence has come down. I had lunch there today. It's a great new amenity for the city, so I encourage you all to use it. It's the, if you don't know what I'm talking about, Joseph Emory Park is what we used to call Pixar Park. It's, but we felt that it was probably more appropriate to honor the city's founder than to memorialize Pixar with a park name, so it's now Joseph Emory Park. It was the location of his house, and there's a plaque there that has a picture of the house and shows you exactly where the house was. So that's kind of cool if you're interested in Emeryville history. Anyway, it's open. It runs from Park Avenue to 45th Street and has the bike path and picnic tables. And last but not least, you will find on the dais in front of you updated versions of both the planning regulations and the general plan. The planning regulations include the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and the interim zoning regulations. And both of those documents are now completely updated. They include all of the amendments that have occurred to date, including, in the case of the planning regulations, the two ordinances that took effect earlier this month and in the case of the general plan, the Doyle-Hollis North Area Amendments. So you now have the latest and greatest planning documents for Emeryville. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Is there any way we can extend these, create these parklets along Hollis? I mean, is it restricted to any specific areas?
No, it's not restricted at all. Typically, it's done in response to requests from the property owner. The property owner needs to build it and maintain it. So all you need is a willing property owner who's interested in doing that. I believe that Arlie has been having conversations with other property owners who might be interested in doing that as well. Oh, there is one on Bay Street. It's not exact, technically, it's not really a parklet. It's an actual moving of the curb. There's a cafe along Bay Street where they've extended the curb out into a parking space and created some more outdoor seating area.
Great. Any other questions for Charlie? Okay, well, we have one study session. We have only one public hearing this evening because the second one was taken off the agenda. So this is on the self-storage unit at 4,000 Adeline Street.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Chair Donaldson just said, this will be a study session for the project City Storage at 4,000 Adeline. They will be applying for a conditional use permit and design review for the project. Just a little background, City Storage is an existing business. There are two sites where it has public storage, or excuse me, personal storage in San Francisco, and they're looking to buy this building and use it at the same use. 4,000 Adeline is at the corner of 40th and Adeline Streets. It sits across 40th from some residential and industrial uses. On Dante is here. Oakwalk represents the majority of this block with the new Magnolia terraces right across the street. And Green City Lofts is abutting it to the north on the same block. Here are some photos of the existing building. It has been unoccupied for approximately a decade and was originally built as an upholstery factory.
Excuse me, what kind of factory?
Upholstery. Thank you, Charlie, for the Sanborn Maps suggestion. Little research there. So this is right at the corner. There is an existing stair and door at the corner facing Adeline, and this is 40th Street. Wrapping around 40th, this is kind of the back corner. This wall faces south, whereas this wall faces southeast and is technically in Oakland. I believe the border is right about here in the building. This is the northwest corner, and these are Green City Lofts on the left. This is the existing drive that will be reused as truck loading and the front corner on Adeline here. And then this is a shot down the existing sidewalk on Adeline. Here, we see the site plan. Again, from the north, there's a loading bay for trucks, a two-way entrance for the garage for cars, and just adjacent to it, pedestrian access. There's a small office space here. The majority of the building is taken up with storage. There's some landscaping wrapping the building around the edge, and then the retail space will be carved out of the storage at the corner using that existing front door that I pointed out. This shows the border of Emeryville and Oakland cutting through the building. So the majority of the site is in Emeryville, but a portion remains in Oakland. And then these outlines are the Green City Lofts building, and this is the elevator tower here. Here is the first floor plan with a little more detail. Garage with two sides, some truck loading that empties into the garage. People will enter the storage area here. There are a few exit stairs, and the storage does wrap kind of into the back area here. Again, the retail. The second floor is primarily storage. There is also a manager's apartment proposed on the second floor that will generally be separate from the storage area. There is access at this point so that it has access to the elevator for ADA reasons. And there's also a private stair descending here to a private door onto Adeline. Here is the roof structure. The roof will be reused but lifted. So all of these structures, the top, the left, and the main, will all be lifted up and reused. And then this manager's apartment will be a new roof. You can also see in this design the solar panels that are proposed closer to 40th Street. And there are also skylights throughout all these rectangles. This is a blow-up of the parking and office space, just so you have a better sense of the layout. A few small items have been changed, and you'll see those when the applicant shows the plans. I'm just going to present these as I receive them. So we have the truck loading zone, parking, the trash in the rear, a bike parking rack with two spaces, the elevator I mentioned. The office space has a front customer greeting area, an office, a conference room, bathrooms that are accessible to the public. And there's a separate ramp and door here for pedestrian access. This will be a roll-up door onto Adeline. Again, the private apartment access is here, and this is an exit stair for the storage on the second floor. Here's a blow-up of the apartment layout. There are three bedrooms. Again, the stair to the outside. This is a ramp that descends to a slightly lower level, second floor, for storage and access to the elevator. And moving on to the elevations. This building sits very close on the north and east sides to the abutting properties, so these plans show only the elevation on the north and east that's actually visible. So this wall here is very much adjacent to the Green City Lofts area and buildings. So this is where the truck loading sits in front as we view it, and so you can see this north section of the building. And then this is the new proposed wall of the manager's apartment on the second floor. There are also currently two vertical pop-ups on the roof that have windows facing out. These will be removed, and the roof will be raised, which you can see from the changed roof line here as well as here. And this existing bowed roof will be flattened and raised. But again, that's a change that you'll see in the upcoming plans. So as I mentioned, these are the two pop-ups. These will go away, and actually, the glass from these pop-ups will be reused to restore these steel sash windows. And the overall roof height of the main section of building will be raised to about the height that these were at to start with. Going along this Adeline Street elevation, here is the new roll-up door, the pedestrian access and windows into the office. This is the private door to the stair up to the manager's apartment, an exit door. This panel and this panel are proposed art pieces. We've not seen any renderings of what those will be, but I believe they're working with a local artist for some sculptural pieces. This kind of abstract line up here, these are concrete panels that will be scored in an abstract manner, and I believe they're looking at staining them a color that would generally match and kind of fade to the background, nothing too bright. And then again, this is the existing entry to the retail space. I believe a few stairs will come off there, lowering the floor inside and adding a ramp as well. But that front entrance will be reused. Facing 40th Street, they are restoring what used to be a steel sash window here on the corner for the retail space, as well as the other somewhat damaged steel sash windows. Again, the roof pop-ups are becoming the concrete scoring that will match from Adeline. There is an existing exterior concrete stair that will go away, it's being removed. And then, I believe, a mirror one exists at this end of the building, and this will go away and it will become an exit stair. There are also signs on the exterior of the building. There's two larger signs at this corner. Excuse me, let me go back just to highlight that. It's hard to see. There's one here above the car and pedestrian entrance, and then a smaller one here at the retail space. And again, a smaller one at the retail space and a larger one here. And I'll focus on those a little later so you can see them better. And then what's going on at this corner? This is the soft corner I showed you in the photo. This section is what's visible facing southeast from 40th Street. And then this grayed-out area is about a foot, foot and a half away from the adjacent industrial building in Oakland. So you would never really see this section of the building, but it's there. Okay. And then this just shows that one section facing southeast. And again, the skylights are coming out. So going to the signs, there are four proposed signs. They will be metal, and I believe pin-mounted, onto the wall. There will be illumination. They haven't specified what yet. There are two larger signs that measure four feet high and 30 feet long. One over the main entry, the car and pedestrian entry at Adeline on the northeast corner, and one at the southeast, excuse me, southwest, no, excuse me, southeast corner facing 40th. And then two smaller signs, one foot by 14 feet, again, over the corner at Adeline and 40th, the two windows that go into the retail bay. Any future retail tenant would need to apply separately for their own signs, but City Storage is proposing signs over this space here, as well as the larger ones. This is a blow-up of one of the restored steel sash windows. They've changed the color from green to blue. And more importantly, I'm just going to go into some detail about how they're treating the windows. This is an unreinforced masonry building, I believe, so they are, they need to take care of it structurally. There's a lot of issues with it. So what they're proposing to do is use shotcrete, which is basically sprayable concrete. And instead of putting them that anywhere on the outside, they're putting it on the inside. So this is a section of this window. You can see the scored concrete panel here. This dotted material is the shotcrete. And then this here is the window. So the window is open much, a much longer distance than the shotcrete is. The shotcrete will only actually be open this shorter distance here, but you won't see the shotcrete through the window. What they're proposing is that LED lights be installed just inside the far edges of the window as well as the edges of the shotcrete. So when these lights are lit, especially at night, it will look like the entire window is illuminated. You can also use these separate lights just at the shotcrete to make a more playful color panel. And this is the night view of what that might look like. Here we have the landscape plan. Some of this has been changed, which you'll see in the future, due to stormwater requirements, but I believe the palette is very similar. They're all bay-friendly plants. This plan is slightly off with the street trees. There are actually five street trees on Adeline and four on 40th. They will all remain. There are a number of smaller trees on the private property here. Those will all come out, as will all of the ivy. So although the invasive landscaping will be removed. And I'd just like to point out that the landscaping does extend all the way to these small little areas at the edge of the property. And you can see that this is a kind of grid pattern using these various plantings here. So conformity to zoning. The use is personal storage, which does require a conditional use permit in the mixed-use-with-residential zone, which they'll apply for. For building setbacks, this is in the mixed-use-with-residential zone, so there are no setbacks for that zone. However, where that zone abuts a residential zone, setbacks do apply. And that setback would be 10 feet in the rear. The reason that the north boundary is the rear is because when a property is on the corner, the shorter of those two property lines is always the front, no matter where the door is. So that 40th is the shorter street frontage, therefore, the north side is the rear. There's a 10-foot setback plus two feet of setback for every foot by which the building goes above 30 feet. Adjacent to that building, adjacent to the north area, the building will not be exceeding 30 feet right away. The second floor manager's apartment, which is set back from there, will be going up to 33 feet. And in this case, the existing building footprint is not changing, so there are no changes to the setbacks here. The floor area ratio zone that they're in allows 1.2 FAR by right and up to 1.6 with a conditional use permit. The proposed FAR is 1.6. I believe it's 1.5998. And I've shown the site area of 36,000 square feet, and the floor area of the two floors of 57,607 square feet. Therefore, they will need a conditional use permit for the FAR as well as a full bonus, which requires three bonus items. For height, 30 feet is allowed by right and 55 feet with a conditional use permit. They are proposing a maximum of 33 feet. This is at the top of the manager's apartment. And for this additional height, one-third bonus is required. So they'll be needing to get approval of three improvements, which gives them the full bonus. They're proposing these improvements, the public right-of-way improvement of expanding the existing sidewalk to a full seven feet six inches, putting solar panels on the roof, which I understand will carry 100% of their summer electrical load and about 83% of their winter load due to poor weather. And then public art, as I mentioned, there's two sculptural panels that will face onto Adeline Street, and their value is approximately twice what it would need to be due to the building permit fee for public art. For car parking, public storage does not have a required ratio. We recommend that the 11 proposed spaces be enough. This is partly due to their calculations at the two other city storage sites. They've made some estimates of how much traffic there is, and they think that this will be enough parking for that. As far as bike parking, excuse me. Two exterior spaces and two interior spaces are required. One of each of these is for the commercial use, and one of each of these is for the residential use. So they are proposing three racks or six spaces on the outside, just adjacent to the front door, and two spaces inside adjacent to the office use. And they haven't shown it on the plans yet, but they understand that an additional interior space for the residential use is necessary as well. As far as a significant structure, there are, I believe, 13 or so possible qualifying elements in the architecture of the building. This building meets seven and only needs to meet five. It is therefore a significant structure. However, very little modification to the existing outside of the building is happening. In fact, most of the changes that are happening actually restore it to a higher level of significance rather than changing things that. significance, rather than changing things that, that make it significant. Therefore, since no true demolition is happening to this building, we feel that this project does not need city council approval. There are a long list of design guidelines that apply to the project. It does meet all of the applicable guidelines. I'll just paraphrase through these. The guidelines are that sidewalks are seven point five feet, there's bay-friendly landscaping, the pedestrian entry is oriented to the street and is visually open, bike parking near entrances, the street wall is interesting and at a pedestrian scale, the industrial warehouse character of the city is preserved, horizontal articulation is used, art is integrated into the project, signs are architecturally compatible and consistent with area character. And then, this also meets or has a few design guidelines that are applicable to certain areas in the city. So, this eastern residential neighborhood is one of them, and it's that they improve the landscaping and sidewalk condition. And then, continuing, that the, they designed the sidewalks to conform with the seven feet, six inches, that parking is located to have a minimum visual impact. And then, this is also a gateway, right on Fortieth Street, is one of the main entries into the city. So, the guideline is that the site should be unique and emblematic of the city. For green streets, the building entrances should be right on the street, and public-oriented uses should be located at the ground level, public art should be used, and active uses should be located near transit, and adaptive, adaptive reuse is encouraged for industrial structures. So, that is all of the design guidelines. The use itself has the hours of operation of eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, and eleven AM to four PM on Sundays. There will be two full-time employees, one of whom will live in the apartment on-site. And again, the traffic load that I mentioned was calculated to be approximately one truck, eight cars, and three walk-ins per day. This is once people are moved in, obviously, when it first opens, there will be more traffic, because people will be moving in, but once things settle down, this is the anticipated traffic load. So, again, eight cars a day, there are eleven spaces, even if everyone came at once, there would be enough parking. So, as I mentioned, there are some changes since these plans were submitted to me. I believe that the applicant will be talking to you about some of these items. For example, the applicant has met with our stormwater employee and discussed raised rain gardens along Adeline Street. They bowed roof on the north edge of the property adjacent to Green City Lofts will actually now be flat. The top height of the roof, however, will remain the same, it will not go any higher. And then, additionally, the truck-loading aisle that goes a little bit east from Adeline, it will be fenced in with a wrought iron fence, which will have a mechanized opening So, this is a study session. There are a number of issues that we're asking for guidance on, and they are, is this use appropriate? It's adjacent to a transit hub, residential and commercial zones. The active use on the corner for the retail space, what should this be? Originally, a cafe was proposed, however, the applicant, Emeryville Police, and Green City Lofts President of the HOA are all not in favor of the cafe. A use more compatible with the self-storage is something like a package store that has boxes, mailing materials, things like that. I believe everyone's more okay with that idea, so that's something that's been floated. Moving on with these issues, is the architectural treatment of the building appropriate? Should the signs proposed be illuminated? And are the three public improvements proposed enough to grant the bonus FAR and height? With that, staff recommends that the commission give staff and the applicant direction on these and any other issues, and I'm open for any questions or comments you have.
Does anybody have any questions for Arlie before the applicant comes?
I do. What was the rationale by the police for not wanting a cafe on the corner?
Right now, that site has, I think, at least two people living on the site, and I think the police were a little worried about who would come to the cafe and how long they would stay there, and things like that. That's, that was my understanding from DCC comments.
Was the requirement to even have a retail space at this corner something that the planning department proposed, or was that something the developer?
That was something that the planning department originally proposed and thought was a good idea. This is adjacent to the transit hub, as I pointed out. That block of Fortieth between San Pablo and Adeline, just adjacent to the site, is a large transit hub and has a lot of activity. We thought that a more active use than just public, or excuse me, self-storage would be great to have at that corner, and it does have kind of the architectural treatment for a more active use.
Despite the fact that we have lots of vacant spaces of this sort in new developments?
It's true. That was one of the reasons that staff did not push to require a specific use, such as a cafe. It would, this, this use would likely not have extras like a grease trap. It would simply be a very flexible space for whatever came along.
If I could chime in, my recollection from when we first met with the applicant was that the idea of some kind of active space at the corner, retail cafe, whatever, was kind of a mutual thing that we both kind of arrived at. I believe it was mentioned by the applicant as something they had been thinking about as well. So, it wasn't an idea that staff came up with and they said, "Oh, okay, we'll think about that." It's something they had already been thinking about.
Any other questions for Arlie?
One last comment. On your dais, there is a printed email. This is an email between the applicant, Lester Schwartz, who's the owner of City Storage, and is about to get up and speak to you, and Cynthia Carpenter, who is the president of the HOA for Green City Lofts. This was one of their first communications. There have been numerous since, I didn't want to print them all out for you. This is simply to mark that they are in touch and have been discussing items. I believe some of those are things that Lester will touch on when he presents to you.
Okay. Thank you, that was very thorough.
With that, Lester Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Lester Schwartz, I'm here with my wife Linda. Thank you for taking the time, Chair and Commissioners, to review this application and hear what we have to say. After Arlie's very thorough presentation, I'm not too sure whether there's much that I can add. She's covered all the bases pretty much. There have been a couple of changes that I will address. I'd also like to just discuss the question of what storage is. Some of you are probably familiar with it, some of you may not be. And then, I would like to talk a little about my discussions with the neighbors at Green City Lofts and how those have progressed, and the accommodations that we're trying to make, and what some of their concerns are, and they may wish to address their concerns themselves. You know, there is a traditional view of storage as these kind of public storage garages that you would see in, in different places, and, and of course, those are not very attractive. In urban infill areas, there is generally now a trend to use existing buildings and provide storage as a service to the community. For example, we have two facilities in San Francisco, one of which is on the corner of Townsend and between Second and Third, which is almost the identical size to this particular proposal. I think there, there are five hundred and forty-six units in that facility, and here there are five hundred and forty-nine. The similarities don't end there. That is an area which is quite densely populated with lots of apartments, lofts, a fair number of businesses in the area, not dissimilar to the area around the corner of Fortieth and Adeline, whereas, you know, there are any number of apartments and lofts in the area, there are also all sorts of small businesses. And one of the things that is so convenient about storage is that most apartments today and, and lofts don't have storage space. It's just, for some reason, I don't know why, it's not done. If you go to Italy or you go to Europe, just about every apartment building has storage in the basement, but for some reason, we don't do that in California. And you find that people just need extra space to store their, their winter things during summer and vice versa. And so, in, in discussions with some people in the area, it became very clear that this would be a desirable use of the building and would offer an amenity for people in the area where they could actually use it. It was very close to where many of these people are and where they reside, and therefore, they would not be jumping in their car and traveling a, a great distance. They would travel short distances and also be able to come in or ride in on their bikes. And I'll go through some of the traffic impacts on this, because that, that has been something that was discussed with the planning department, and we explained how we got to these parking numbers. Now, we think this is a good solution for the building. I think Arlie explained, we will be able to preserve the exterior of the building, which is, you know, a masonry exterior, which is highly suspect from a seismic perspective, but we have a way of coming in and using shotcrete to preserve that, and preserve that facade, and yet, at the same time, reinforce it and make sure that it is structurally sound. The corner space, we're perfectly willing to go along with some kind of retail use. Our idea there again was that we would have post boxes, packaging materials, UPS collection, that kind of thing. As you probably all know, the US Post Office is busy closing down, post offices as fast as they can because of budgetary considerations, and so, this will offer an additional amenity in that regard, and so, we're, we're perfectly willing to go along with that proposal. So, we feel that we're, that this proposal will offer several advantages. One, we're not going to be demolishing the building, and we're going to be preserving it as explained. We will be raising the roof approximately five feet, and the reason for that is, this building, as Arlie mentioned, has been vacant for a number of years. Any number of people have looked at how they can use this building and what can be done with it. The building is highly problematical. It's actually four separate buildings that have been cobbled together into one larger building, and we came up with this idea of demolishing the internal walls, raising the roof approximately five feet, so that we could get two stories internally inside the building. And that will enable us to get sufficient floor area ratio in there to make this an economically viable proposition, otherwise, it just doesn't work. We are going to, as, as Arlie said, pretty much preserve the exterior of the building along the lines that she explained, and we're going to be making these various improvements, and we believe that we meet what the bonus requirements are to elevate the FAR from 1.2 to 1.6. As far as the height of the building is concerned, essentially, what we've done over there is, there is a bowed roof which sits adjacent to the Green Street Lofts. Originally, we were going to raise the whole roof five feet. I then met with Cynthia Carpenter, who is the chairperson of the, or the president of the HOA of the Green City Lofts, and she explained that she really didn't want it to go too much higher, because she was concerned about the view out of her apartment. And so, the solution that I came up with is that we will remove that bow roof entirely, and we will put a flat roof in, which will be below the top elevation of what that bow roof currently is. In fact, it is going to be a foot lower. There are these clear-story skylights that are not visible from Cynthia Carpenter's apartment, but are visible from other apartments. Those are also going to have to be removed, because seismically, there are openings in that roof membrane which are not tenable, and so, we have to remove those anyway. When we put the flat roof in on that section of the building, it will actually be two and a half feet lower than the top of the, of those clear stories or those, those, those skylights. So, in essence, for the main part of the building, we're actually going to be lowering the roof, and the roof will be below thirty feet, which is the, you know, the requirement there. The apartment has a slightly higher roof, because obviously, it sits on top of the two stories, and that is going to be slightly above thirty feet. Although, I discovered to my surprise today that we've actually put ten-foot ceilings in that apartment, so if we have to reduce it by two feet, we probably can, and still get below the thirty, the thirty-feet height limit if, if necessary. The issues as far, in, in my discussions with the Green Street Loft President, she expressed concerns about, that's Cynthia Carpenter, she expressed concerns about several items. One was the height of the roof. The other one was, they were concerned about people that are sleeping in the area where the driveway currently is, and they wanted to have that fenced off, which I volunteered we would do. It's in our interest to do that anyway, and it would be of assistance to them too. We will put up a wrought iron fence and a wrought iron gate that will be electronically activated. We have not finished designing that, but I'm sure we'll come up with a design that they feel is, is, is okay. She also mentioned a couple of other items. She was concerned about the parapet, basically, running parallel to that parapet, to that bowed ceiling, bowed roof, is a parapet wall, and that parapet wall intersects the roof about two and a half feet down from the top of the parapet wall. In essence, we are going to have to raise that parapet wall, and I didn't realize exactly how much it was, but I discovered that in discussions with the architect. Currently, the top of the parapet wall is at seventeen foot, eight inches, and we're going to have to raise it to twenty-one foot, seven inches, to get our second story in there. We will eliminate adding a parapet above that height by using one R materials, which the architects informed me we can put horizontally going into the building, so that it is fire-safe without having to add another three-foot parapet, which is normally required. So, that parapet, the top of that parapet will be below the top of the bowed roof. Another concern that Mrs. Carpenter indicated was, she was concerned about the landscaping along Adeline Street, and particularly between the curb and the sidewalk, she expressed a concern about the fact that when you get out of your cars, very often, there's undergrowth there, and you have to step in the undergrowth, you're going to step onto the sidewalk. So, we did have a discussion with Public Works about that, and they have indicated that we might in certain areas be prepared to, they would be prepared to allow us to either use mulch or gravel or something, so that people are not going to be traipsing through bushes, and, and we're perfectly prepared to do that. Another issue that the neighbors were concerned about was the height of the solar panels that are going to be on the roof. Those are less than two feet high, and they're in an area to the south of the building on the Fortieth Street side, and from my conversations with Cynthia, she indicated she was not concerned about that as being a problem. The last issue that we discussed, she and I, was that we need to have a vent into the garage to vent out fumes and carbon dioxide. Because of the, the limited nature of that garage, a very small venting, piece of venting equipment is required, probably won't make much more noise than, than a restroom or bathroom fan, and we've located that about sixty feet away from the Green City Street Lofts, right on the edge of the garage, on the, as far away from them as we could, as we could do that. There are some changes to the building. Sean Fritz knows how to work what he put together better than me, so I think he's going to show us what they are. Is that a mouse that fits in there? Oh, yeah. Okay. We basically, although it's not shown, it got cut off, there are three parking racks right here for a total of six bicycles. There are two inside, we've moved those from where the original bicycle racks were after discussions with Public Works, so there are four here. We are going to also provide for the manager a, a place for the manager to store their bicycle on the second floor. We're dedicating a unit to that purpose, and access to that unit will be via the elevator. We've also moved the, the refuse removal bins to this location, they were in a different location previously. We have, you will notice here that there are a total of eleven parking spaces, and I will get into the reason for that number in, in a, in a short period of time. This loading bay is an existing bay, and we don't expect much truck, traffic at all, but this is the area here where the wrought iron fence will go, and this is where the wrought iron gate will go. The location of the solar panels, you've seen, we've put those on the south end of the building, which is the best location for their exposure to the sun anyway, so that has, so that, that works for everyone. And the, we've, we've changed the layout of the, the manager's apartment, the The one that we had previously didn't seem very comfortable to live in and so we changed that around. We've added bedrooms here. One of these will probably end up in a study or an office anyway. And access for handicap purposes will be through the elevator here and Ali has explained that in quite some considerable detail. Uh, we have also made changes to the, um, uh, the landscaping and, um, the landscaper is here to address any concerns that you may have in that regard. But basically, uh, we have a bay-friendly landscape guideline, a planting schedule with more Californian natives than we had previously. Uh, we had some flax in there, which we've removed as a, not very desirable because they tend to mutate a little bit. Um, and we've tried to add some more color to some of the plants that we have there with the irises and the grasses. We also have to deal with runoff water from the roof and the way we're going to deal with that is through, with flow-through planters. Those flow-through planters are these green areas here and there's one at the back. There's an open area in the back of the building which will accommodate that. Um, and the design of those will involve either a corten steel siding or a concrete siding. We haven't finally decided on that, but perhaps you can give us some guidance as to what you would like in that regard. As far as the parking is concerned, um, I'd like to just show you a couple of graphs that you may, um, that may assist you a little bit in, in, uh, understanding how we came up with these calculations. I mentioned that we had a storage facility at 144 Townsend Street. And the period during March to April each year is probably one of the busiest periods. It's, I don't know whether it's spring cleaning or what it is, but that's when most people seem to move in and out of storage facilities. What we did is we took a 60-day period during, uh, 2011 and we calculated what the daily trips were, the number of vehicle trips and the number of pedestrian trips. And by the way, when I use the word pedestrian, I'm including bicycle trips. Um, and you can see here that, um, we have a total average of 16, which is this top red line. Uh, the, the blue line is the number of vehicles that come in and the, uh, light orange line is the number of pedestrian or bicycle, um, events. As you will see, there are 544 units in this particular facility. We only have three loading bays in this facility. We don't even have car parking. The facility has been open for 20 years. We have never had an issue with parking ever. So, um, that'll give you an idea. For some reason, at this particular facility, the manager keeps track of the difference between vehicle trips and pedestrian trips. At the other facility, the manager didn't do that, but let's take a look at that and I'll show you what we, we deal with there. The average daily total trips at the other facility, which is a huge one, which has 268 units, which is almost four times the size of what we propose in, uh, at Adeline Street and almost four times the size of the one on Townsend Street. Uh, that, the city of San Francisco required us to put in 28 regular spaces, three handicap spaces and full loading bays. Um, we have a total of, a total trip, a number of trips daily of 30, of which three of those are moving trips. And by that, I mean, people are actually moving in and moving out their goods. Uh, the other 27 that we see over there are people that are just either coming to visit their stuff, which they do from time to time, or make small additions or subtractions. But they're not major events where they arrive with a, with a rider truck or something of that kind and, and start moving things in and out. So as you can see, once these facilities become stabilized, the amount of traffic is, 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 is rather limited. And, um, uh, and we ended up discovering that we have five or six people in this facility parking, coming in and using the parking at any one time. Most of those parking spaces are never used. The most we've ever really had at any one time is about 10 people. And so in using this, and I, I've been involved in this business for almost 30 years, I, I've at different stages had about 14 of these facilities. I'm very familiar with the traffic and the last thing we ever want to do is not have sufficient parking because that just aggravates everybody and it's no good. We're absolutely convinced and there've been numerous studies done in the industry about what the parking is. The, the, the parking spaces that we've provided are much more than adequate for what we need on this particular facility. And in my discussions with the planning director, um, he, he agreed with me that that seemed to be a reasonable number of parking spaces. So, um, basically that is, um, in a, not so much in a nutshell, but that's basically what we're proposing here and I, I hope you'll look upon it favorably. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to try to answer them.
So do you have any of the updated elevations of the building showing the roof changes?
Yes, yes, we do.
Is the architect going to give a little brief?
Yes, in fact, I think, uh, I, I think I'll let Mr. Massey do that with, uh...
Thanks.
Um, does anyone have any questions for?
I do. And that's the operation of the, the garage door going into the, the main parking area? Will that be open all the time or how does that work?
It will be open during business hours and if we look at the...
Can you speak into the microphone, please? We're, it's being recorded and...
It, it will be open during business hours and if you look at the office layout, the way it is laid out is that there is a room, uh, there, there is a window at that office that... Oh, okay. Well, I'm fine, thank you. And basically there's somebody in the place at all times. We found that even though we will have video cameras all over the place, we find that, uh, a, a human being is the best security you can have. You know, the eyes and ears of someone there is better. We will keep that door open during business hours, but it will be visible from the office. We will obviously lock it at the close of business. Um, the person in the office will be able to visually check everybody that drives in. They will have a view of the elevator so they can see who's going in and out of the elevators. And, um, we have never had an incident at any of our other facilities which are similarly designed to give visual, uh, uh, visual opportunity to the manager.
So your other facilities are similar to this where there is a door that's open all the time?
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, uh, uh, they have three loading bays and they're, they're three. One has four and one has three and those bays are open all day long.
Okay.
Tell me again how many units it is?
This particular one is, uh, let me tell you exactly, I think it's 549.
Have you, um, do you have any, uh, packaging type stores attached to it, your other?
No, we do not.
No, you, so you don't, do you have any idea about what, uh, size, say a UPS-type store might need?
They're usually very small. Candidly, um, we felt that it would be something that the city wanted and therefore we offered it and we prepared to, to do that. We chose not to do them in the other places because it adds a layer of bureaucracy to our operations and we have to, you know, then have somebody staff that. But a thousand square feet is what the planning department thought would be an appropriate area and, you know, if that is what's required, then we will go along with that.
Okay. That's good. Any other questions for the applicant before we hear from the architect? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair. Uh, the only real elevation that got, um, changed because of that bowstring truss roof changing is this one, which is the north elevation. And, uh, it's not so easy to see, but it's really, that's the bowstring truss, um, that will be removed. And you can see that the top of the roof is going to be somewhere in that vicinity. But I think it's, what is it, a foot and a half? Shorter? One foot shorter. That's Sean Fritz, by the way, from, uh, my office. We're working on this together. So if you, I think Ali did a good job of, uh, explaining what the elevations were doing, but if you like me to, I can go over them again. But there ha, there haven't been much change. One of the things we actually looked at was this, uh, business of what happens to that, uh, top area where the, uh, extra concrete is and those panels. So it's going to be, you see that band that's over there already? It was, it was probably something that was added at some point to this building. So it's going to be about that size that it'll go up. And one idea was to do something like this. The other was to do something that was a little bit more organic looking. And today I had this idea of maybe going around Emeryville and finding some art deco buildings. And amazingly enough, there's a few of them out there. You know, the, um, I did the Senior Center on, uh, in the Triangle where the, the old Veterans Building and that's a little art deco. They, they did it really well, you know, these patterns that they use. So we'll, we'll, we'll come up with something nifty for that, uh, panel up there. I think, uh, we'll come up with something interesting, unless if you're really in love with this, in which case we'll keep it. So, in essence, we're really bringing the building back to life, you know? Not, not, nothing too radical or, uh, big.
What is the roof material going to, what color, what, you know?
Uh, don't know yet, but it's mostly going to be some sort of a single ply roof, which is mostly, um, cut lighter in color, uh, grayish. The, um, the sustainable sort of thing to do is to have it be as light as possible so that it doesn't get too warm and reflect too much heat. So, um, that's probably what's going to happen.
Kava, what's the exterior material for the apartment? Is that a drive-it or is that a stucco of sorts?
Probably, uh, stucco of some sort, yes. Something that would be compatible with that band of, uh, concrete that's on top. Plus, there's a bunch of, you know, there's a banding of stucco already on the building. Something that would be compatible with that. Certainly not brick.
Have you thought about using some more industrial materials for cladding as opposed to the scored concrete? I mean, have you thought about using a galvanized metal or some sort of metal panel or screen wall or something just to give it an industrial nature since it is an industrial building?
Hadn't thought about it, but now that you've mentioned it, we can look at it for sure. I mean, you know, the, the lofts next door have a lot of corrugated steel on it and that could be something that, yeah, that could, that could work. Sure.
Can you tell us about the glass in the windows? So right now it's, it's like plain, painted out?
Yeah, most of it is painted out and the idea would be to, and we're going to do maybe a mock-up of one of them to just see exactly what would work. But the idea, because there's a few inches away, there's a concrete wall, most likely the, uh, glass is going to be translucent. And so a light will come through it, those LED lights that Ali mentioned. Uh, but you can't really see through it. So it's a, a nice sort of upgrade from the painted...
Yeah, definitely.
And I don't know if you noticed, but so many of them have been modified where they took a section out and put a cheesy, uh, aluminum window, um, in a portion of it. And we're going to restore all of those, um, to the original shape, so...
So and it'll be uniform materials on each pane of glass? So it's like, because sometimes in some of the buildings that we see, it's like you have one pane that's this translucent and another pane next to it is...
Right.
Some, something totally different with a different pattern? They'll all be uniform?
Um, if that's what you like.
That's what I would like.
Okay. But, I mean, I've seen some old building, there's actually one on Eighth Street in Berkeley where over the years, every pane has almost become different than the one next to it and it's actually really beautiful. It, it's, you know, they, they actually painted some of them and there are different colors. There's the, you know, there's just, so it could, I'll send you a picture so that you, you'll, you'll see how good it could be. But the idea was to actually make it uniform. Yeah.
There's actually kind of, uh, uh, along the High Line in New York in one of the buildings, they did a, a public art piece that had these type of windows...
Right.
Where they did kind of a mosaic kind of thing.
Right. It could be, if, if it's done well, it could be a nice thing. But the idea was to have it be uniform.
And in the daytime?
Daytime is just going to be, yeah, it's just going to be a glass window and, I mean...
I think you'll see the, the eyes of...
Probably, probably. I think it's going to be, um, it's going to be hard to light it, you know, have enough light on the inside that during the daytime, light would glow out of it. I think that's a little too much light probably to put in. But at night, it will certainly glow and look like there's life behind it.
The, the refuse storage inside the building?
Yes, definitely.
Waste management is able to back up without knocking out those ballers?
There's a, yeah, the garage doors. Actually, this would be one building where it's easy to do those kinds of things, in and out of very easily, yes.
And you've got the height for it to?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and I don't like blue.
You don't like blue?
I hate blue.
The owner hates green. I don't know what we left with. What would you like? Red, yellow?
Corten, cinnamon, corten, I love. I'm partial to corten.
But you know, if it's too close to the brick, then it's going to look like...
But it could contrast, you know, I think you should look at the Emeryville Center for the Arts. They did a very contemporary addition on top of a, an industrial building.
Not built yet, though.
No, but the, the renderings?
Oh, I see.
The contrast is very interesting?
No, you have a point. It's mostly glass, though.
Yeah.
The, the addition, those two...
Translucent type of, like a Stephen Hall type of glass structure.
Right, right.
But it, it's very cool and juxtapositioned to the brick, so...
Yeah, that's so true.
I'd love to see that here. And I, I know you're spending a lot of money, so spend a few more bucks with the...
Thanks, Steve.
So can you talk a little bit about the, um, sound mitigation for that truck loading bay? There's going to be, a wrought iron fence doesn't sound like it's going to do much for that?
Yeah, that didn't, uh, seem to come up as a, as a huge issue. But I think the fact that the actual activities inside the building after the truck backs up into the, or, or goes up against the loading dock and the roll-up door, most of the noise is going to be inside of the building, if there is any of it. So it's just going to be the noise of the truck going back. Um, so you have any ideas for noise mitigation for that area? I summed it up perfectly.
Are there any other questions for Kava? Because, um, we, I'd also like to give the opportunity for anyone else who's here from Green City Lofts to speak if they'd like to, before we come back and discuss it.
Let me just make a comment about the truck loading. I believe that that would be limited to the hours of operation of the facility. And we can include some conditions of approval stipulating what those hours are. So you'd be insured that you wouldn't have trucks backing up at like 2 o'clock in the morning or something.
Thank you.
So the, the plan that's on the screen right now is a little bit different than what's in our, our package, the...
Right.
With the, um, the ramp on the corner by the retail space.
Right.
Have you explored other, well, it looks like you have because it's changed, but, um, other variations of doing that that could possibly put the, the ramping on 40th Street and preserve that space? That's kind of a wonderful little space right where the ramping is at. And if that were a café, it would be a fantastic space for, for an outdoor space. It's kind of, it's shielded from, from 40th?
Right.
It would have to be raised, though, because the floors...
Yeah, which is even better to me. I mean, if there was a sort of a terrace up at the building height level that, or the floor level of the building, which is about three, four feet up off the ground, that could be a nice little, more privacy and a little bit, uh, secure. But I thought we weren't doing a café.
Well, we haven't discussed that yet, but...
Oh, I see.
But, but I, I was just looking at the, the possibilities of, of doing something like that and, um, there was a comment made about lowering the floor inside the building. So, so right now I think there are like four or five steps. It's a pretty, pretty high climb above the sidewalk. So that's actually going to be coming down?
Right. Yeah, just for, by like six or eight, 10 inches or something.
Okay, so it's still fairly significant.
It's still pretty high, right.
If I could chime in, um, a couple of points. This is certainly not an insurmountable object, but if you, uh, if you look at the plan, I think you'll see the property line on, uh, Adeline Street is quite a bit out from the building, so that ramp would still be on their property. If it were put on the 40th Street side, the property line is right at the face of the building, so it would be within the public right-of-way, which would need an encroachment permit. Like I say, that's not an insurmountable obstacle, but it's just a consideration. The other thing is if, if the floor were lowered, that would mean that the door would also have to be lowered, so that architectural element of the building would have to be changed. So I, I'm sure Kava could make that look really cool. But it's just a, a change to the elevation.
Okay. How high are those flow-through planters going to be?
How?
How tall?
Tall? Um, I don't know, do they need to be like three feet? Would you like to hear from the landscape architect, please?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair. Um, the flow-through planters are... The flow-through planters are, we feel a best solution to the stormwater management requirement by the city. They are raised and they have a solid bottom, so water does not percolate down. But they serve as a filtration facility for the water. They are a very good solution for, for urban areas because they're very compact, they're easy to maintain, they are easy to build. They, we can do sort of anything we want with them. But they do require to, to have certain elements in them and one of them is a foot of drain rock. One of them is 18 inches minimum of fast-draining soil and one of them is minimum of six inches of freeboard above the soil. So that gets us to three feet.
Could you point out, I don't know if you can use the mouse to point out where the planters would be?
They are colored green on this plan.
So, so everything, everything that's in the, the dark green would be the flow-through?
Yes.
Okay.
There is the mouse. A smaller planter on the corner of 40th and Adeline, a longer planter because we do have a fairly large roof area and we need to match that area to the square footage of the planters. So the, the planter along Adeline Street is, is fairly large and we would build a planter in the open space corner on the northeast side.
It, it's possible to sink these into the ground however much we want. But I think, you know, the entire base of the building has a concrete where they, they built up the slab and it's so covered right now with the ivy and stuff that we haven't quite looked at what the shape of it is. And if it's a really nice-looking sort of thing that they used a nice form to build it or something, maybe it makes more sense for the planters to be lower as opposed to, you know, three feet up off of the ground. But if they look kind of beat up and not very well done, then maybe the planters would be a good thing to cover them up. But that's something we'll figure out by the next time. And if you have a preference, tell us now and we'll, we'll, we'll figure out what to do.
Well, before we tell you all our preferences, let's see if there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this.
I have one more question, actually. Can you pull up the sign, which one was the one?
Where is it?
One of the signs. Yeah, that one. Has there been any consideration to where another sign would be once that corner unit is?
Once that corner unit what?
Is rented.
Oh, I see. I don't know. Do we need more signs?
Well, obviously.
We don't need more signs. I think we're good.
They'll need some kind of.
Oh, I think the name of the, the business will go where it says City Storage.
So it would be replaced?
Correct, right.
Okay, that's, that, I would, yeah.
You're good?
Good.
Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item?
Public comment, yeah.
Public comment. Okay, sure. It's not a public hearing, but we wanna hear from you because studying this.
Chair Donaldson, three minutes, correct?
Yes, we have three minutes.
That'll be hard. So I'm Cynthia Carpenter. Largely what I've heard from the residents is that they would be happy to have somebody taking care of the building, lovingly taking care of the building and cleaning it up. It's really an eyesore, mostly a place for homeless, you know, to kind of sleep at this point. The major concern has been the height, both of that parapet wall and for me personally, that sloped roof. So you kind of have to separate them because the sloped roof affects me personally. The parapet wall would affect the residents on the first floor and could significantly change the light in our courtyards. So I think, I'm, I'm fine with the change to the domed roof. I'm gonna go back now that we have an actual number on that and discuss with the residents because it's gonna be almost four feet change in that, three feet, eight inches. And, let's see. So the roof height and the parapet were the concerns. We're still, we don't really have any solid information about the fencing. I too don't love the blue because it faces our, our courtyard with that beautiful Buddha face, you know, behind it is that giant blue wall. So I'd be, I'd be happy to see a change in that color. Other than that, I'm, I think it's a good use for the property and I, I know many people at the lofts could use some storage because we don't have any. And I think it'd be beneficial to the community, so that's it. And it's been really nice working with the group. They've been so forthcoming with information back and forth. I appreciate it very much.
That's always good to hear.
Yeah, no, it's been good.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to say something? Sure, come forward if you'd like to.
I have a question. My name is Susan. I also live at the Green City Lofts and it's in regards to the planters. I was just.
You have to speak into the microphone.
I was wondering if it was three feet high, what will be holding the planters? Like if there's, is it some sort of wall or how was it elevated or contained? My concern is, I just wanna know what it is. You know, I don't want another place where graffiti or something like that.
Thank you.
We haven't decided yet what the planters will be, but we can go back to the planting plan. We, the, the planters will be, the wall of the planter will be solid. How high above ground it's, it's going to be, again, depends as, as Kava said, we could, we could sink the planters down into the ground. But the, but the main point I want to make is that there is, there is a fairly wide area of, of planting in front of the, the raised planters and we will plan that with something that comes up to about three feet. So the planters can be screened from potential graffiti.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, the commission, let's, what direction do you wanna give to the applicants?
I think it might be useful if they did a shadow casting drawing on the north side to show what part of the courtyard is gonna be covered by the additional height of the building because that was an issue raised. And I don't think it'll be significant, but I think it would be helpful if you had that kind of drawing. I'm skeptical of the commercial space. I, I know it's a matter of faith for planners to try and put these things into buildings because it theoretically is gener, going to generate life on the street. But in fact, it's very difficult to rent them. There aren't small businesses that can survive except in very high-income areas. And it just sits vacant. And I, I think it would be just as well that it be incorporated into the facility as part of storage space. That's my feeling.
Well, I definitely disagree with that. I, I understand what you're saying about, about we have a lot of small storefronts that are vacant right now. But having seen the effect of Black Diamond Cafe in, in Avenue 64 right next to where I live at Pacific Park Plaza, it has made a huge difference on the street and the life on the street. And it's kind of a similar situation. That's where the, the TransBay bus lets off and there's a stream of people that go in and out of that café. And I, I see what it's doing for my neighborhood, that it's really adding life. And I see that when I go over there and I see people from PPP there and they're talking about that they had their book club meeting over there tonight kind of thing. And it's just, it's, it's wonderful what it's doing for the community. And I think there's some good things happening right down on Adeline with some of the cafes and restaurants that are starting to develop. And I think this really has potential for that area. So, and one of, one of the questions raised by staff was the appropriateness of this kind of in a TOD area at the transit hub. And my initial reaction to the project when I, when I heard it, a storage facility, was shouldn't we be doing something for people instead of stuff? And then I went to the site and then I looked at it and I actually grabbed a cup of coffee and I was sitting in, in the little parklet next to the Oak Walk project. And some of the neighbors that live across the street came by and we started talking and I asked them about the possibility of a café and they were very enthusiastic about it. And, you know, talked about what a great thing that would be for the neighborhood. And, and I kind of agree. And it was kind of, it was that, that cup of coffee that I had in the park that kind of what, is what triggered that engagement and that conversation. So seeing this as a transit hub, it's really important to me that I'm fine with the rest of the building. I think it's a great use, actually, somebody that lives in a condo and appreciates the little storage space that I do have, rented space. I think it is a benefit to the city, especially with a number of lofts and condos and things that we have. But I'd like to see something really special on that corner. And I know that I've seen what Kava's done with reused buildings before and I, I think we can do something really great on that corner to really engage the public and make it, make that little part of it something really special. And what you're doing with the rest of the building is really, I think it's gonna be beautiful. You're restoring something that's been in neglect for a long, long time. So our second bullet point on this was what should the active space be? And I definitely think it should be a café. I don't think we can mandate a café, but, and market has to drive things and if a can't, café can't come in, but something that sells shipping supplies could. Maybe we have shipping supplies for a couple of years until the neighborhood changes and can support a café. But whatever we do, I think it has to be able to support a café in the future. And I'd really like the outdoor space to be something special that could be used in conjunction with that café. And, and looking at the, the depth of that space and the tree-lined street that it has and the sheltering that it has from 40th Street, it, it has the potential to be something really, really nice. So I'd like to, to see that become that. Is the architectural treatment of the building appropriately? And especially in regard with the upper story and use of concrete, absolutely. We can go to a number of buildings that Kava has done, adaptive reuse buildings like this. I think, I'm confident that this will be a, a beautiful building. Should the signs be illuminated? I would prefer not or something that's very subtle. If it's a steel sign, maybe some very subtle backlighting. Certainly don't want anything that draws a whole lot of attention to this, especially because it is in a residential neighborhood. The more subtle we can make it, the better. And finally, do the public improvements proposed justify granting full bonuses? I definitely think so. I think you, for the height, I think you've done some great things to work with the neighbors to come up with a solution that works for everybody. For the units, the second, the, the owner's unit. I think the 10-foot ceilings are a great idea for smaller spaces. They really make a difference. I would much rather see the, the additional two feet than trying to squeeze things down. I don't have a problem with the height at all, especially considering the height of Green City Lofts. And when I look out my window from PPP, I see kind of how that towers over at that end of the city. So I'm fine with the height. The improvements that I'm really happy to see are the sidewalk improvements, the, the landscape improvements, just the, the quality of what's being done to the building. So I definitely feel that it justifies the bonuses. I think that's my comments.
Let me go back. Buzz, do you have any other specifics addressing the staff's questions that they had about outstanding issues? Or you want me to?
No, right at this point.
Any other, do you have comments?
Sure we do.
I'm sure you do. Go ahead.
Can I add one more? I, I don't like blue either.
We've got a trend going. I, I do agree with John. I think the corner could really be activated with the use being perhaps a café or something that will spill out onto a, a parklet or whatever we can do in that little corner would be really nice. It's really a major area. It's becoming a major transit hub and, and I'd like to see something out there as well, something other than a sedentary use. And I think with the additions, I, I would, since we're not trying to match the existing, I would really celebrate the additions and make them really cool. Make them stand out, make them an eye-popper with whatever you wanna use, whether it's metal, corten or a combination of materials, something different, you know? Look at Frank Gehry's work. Just do something a little, little more whimsical perhaps, just to add some, some interest to that corner. Cause I think you have an opportunity to make it really, really special. As far as signage goes, I agree with John. I, I don't really like illuminated signage. I, I'd much rather see period-type deco signage as you have it. Individual letters look really nice on that building. And as far as materials for the planters, corten would be really nice. So that's my spiel.
I was really excited about the potential of the art deco, bringing that in to the whole building. And maybe even with the signage, I thought that was a wonderful thing. I absolutely want to see that corner activated. I'm hoping that that space is big enough for, for that to happen. I'm not sure what would happen. I, I would be not against a café either or some type of UPS store could be useful. Something definitely should, needs to be special about that corner to attract attention. I'm, I, I completely get that all these lofts need storage spaces. And at first I thought it was, oh darn, not at the transit center. We need more transit center, but actually, it would be, it is very close to where a lot of people live. So it would, it would be helpful to have that there. And I'm, I very much like the, the way it's, it looks and the reuse of the building. And I think Buzz had a good comment about doing a little shadow study so we can see what's gonna be going on in the courtyard. And I think also not, not very excited about the lighting of signs in that area just because it is right next to residential. I think that if, if anything, just the lightest behind, lit from behind and maybe only on the corner. And I think it would, it would justify granting the full bonus for the FAR and the, and the one-third bonus for the height at this point. So I like it.
It sounds like we have pretty much consensus on a lot of these items. I think it is an appropriate use. There's definitely a lot of places that need the storage. I think that it will be active because there are so many small units in Emeryville that need storage. So I think it's an appropriate use. I really appreciate the fact that you're gonna be restoring the facade of the building and using as much, the, the whole envelope of the building is remaining, is gonna be brought back to what it could be rather than what it has been for the last 10 years or so, which is a deteriorating structure. I, I agree that that corner needs to be special and while I don't know whether a café is appropriate at this point, I think the space needs to be designed with the outside space designed so that it could accommodate that in the future, if that's not the use that happens there now. Maybe the package store is the best thing at the moment, but I would hate to see an opportunity lost to create some outdoor space there at that corner that could in the future or at the present be used for something active and that brought people. or at the present be used for something active and that brought people's attention to that corner. Seems that there's a general consensus that bright signage, illuminated signage, if there's going to be any illumination, it should be toned down. And I also agree that the proposed benefits justify the FAR, especially considering that you're staying almost within the existing building envelope. I think that it works out quite nicely. It did bring up to me one thing in looking at our future zoning about the setbacks that we were looking at, about the amount of setback from abutting a residential use. I think we need to look at having an angled setback provision in that so that when we have something like the manager's apartment, which I appreciate is three bedrooms, since we have very few of those in town too, since that's away from the property line, if that's the piece that is above the 30 feet, I don't think we need to treat it exactly the, I think we need to look at a different way to treat what we're thinking about in the future. That's an aside. Anyway, is there any other direction that we'd like to give? Sounds like a good project. And I also don't think blue works with the bricks, so. Our consensus on that. Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you with all of this stuff worked out and fleshed out.
Let me throw one other little wrench in the works here.
Oakland.
The property is about 20% in Oakland. And we have been trying to extract an answer from Oakland for weeks as to what their permitting process is going to be for this. Hopefully, since it's only about two feet of street frontage that's actually in Oakland, they will defer to us and just let us make the decision on it. But I don't know. I'm not sure how they're going to handle it. But hopefully, it'll be a positive answer from Oakland.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have only one public hearing this evening, and this is on the art signs. And I'm guessing that's Arlie again?
One second. Did you guess?
Gee, I didn't see it.
Did you get one of these? No, what's it from? I wonder if that's from the Golden Gate Lock key. I didn't show us all. Good evening, commissioners.
You have a smaller audience now.
Yes. So, I am presenting a major sign permit for art.com, the lowercase on purpose. First.
Excuse me, could we take the conversations down the stairs a little bit, please?
Kava.
Excuse me. Thank you.
First, let me call your attention to another piece of paper on the dais. It's, I believe, the third page of the staff report may have been missing. If not, great. But if it was, it contains the recommendation from staff, which is that the planning commission approve the two proposed signs with the attached conditions of approval. So, in case that wasn't there, that's what it says and you have it now.
Thank you, Charlie, for herding the cats.
I'll wait a moment. So, this sign proposal is for 2100 Powell Street. Just for clarity, last month, you looked at a master sign program for the towers, which is the three other office towers at the former Watergate site. This is the separate building that wasn't part of that project. As you know, the building is located at the northeast corner of the peninsula, across from Chevy's, and very adjacent to the freeway here and the Holiday Inn. And these three other buildings are part of the towers project here. Looking at the building itself, the signs are proposed for the north and south ends of the building. They would face out towards, kind of generally parallel to the freeway. This is a drawing of the sign. The entire face is covered with LED lights, so the face itself does not have a color. Sign dimensions are six feet, one and a half inches high, and that includes the highest point of the T, and 33 feet, five inches long. There are two signs, that's the dimension for both of them. The letters are five inches deep. Each sign is 203 square feet. As I said, there's LEDs. The LEDs can change colors. I understand they can display millions of different colors. The sign is attached to a structure that already exists. It used to have a sign. It's been taken down already. I don't remember what that sign used to say, but.
Seibel.
There you are. So, this structure was constructed to hold a sign. It sits on a small deck that is just below the roof line, I think one or two floors below. And so, the sign itself would not be above the top of the roof of the building. Here are renderings of what the sign would look like, both at day and night. Both of these are looking at the building, I believe, from the south. And then here is a view of, you can't really see the sign, of the building from the Bay Bridge. The sign is actually in this rendering. It sits right here. You can kind of see a little bit of fuzzy white. So, that's where it would be. And then these are some images of what the sign could look like. As I specified, the LED lights can do a lot of different displays. The sign can be a single solid color. It can be multiple colors but static, or it can be moving. You can program it in a lot of different ways. So, the design guidelines that apply to signs are that they are architecturally compatible to the building, consistent with the area character, legible and readable and visible. This does meet all of those guidelines. I understand there was some discussion about another guideline, which refers to dark sky compliant lighting. I read it carefully. It does specify building illumination, but that's another element that you can consider in relation to this sign. So, this is before you because the sign is larger than 50 square feet. It's technically not a roof sign because it's not on the roof, so we'll call it a wall sign. As I mentioned, there are a lot of color options here. Staff considered a lot of these and feels that the findings necessary to approve this can be made for the sign when it is a solid color. We got a little bit into the nitty-gritty and said that this solid color could change every 24 hours and that each of the two signs could have a different color at the same time. They're never visible at the same time because they face different directions. So, that is what the conditions of approval we presented to you in the staff report say. Given those conditions, staff does feel that the findings can be made. And therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the attached conditions of approval. That's everything.
Any questions for Arlie?
The sign doesn't look any larger than the Seibel sign that was up there.
I don't know the dimensions of the old sign, so I can't make a direct comparison.
I mean, the letters look smaller.
Given the size of the building, it does not seem hugely dominating.
Are these the same size as the letters on the three other buildings which are further west?
I don't know that. I have not compared them with size. I was more thinking about colors and things like that, but. They look smaller because they're lowercase.
Lowercase and it's short. Does the applicant, can we hear from the applicant? I would like to hear what your thoughts are about the LED color display.
So, this is Tom Anderson from Yesco, the sign company, and he also has an animation to play for you that display more of the sign options.
Thank you.
And they're just at the top there.
Great. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you, Arlie. She's great to work with too. She's absolutely fantastic. We pull permits and go through this process all over California, all over the country. She's been fantastic to work with, so thank you.
We think she's great too.
Yeah, yeah. So, what I'd like to do is give you a five-minute summary of our project approach, how we got from, you know, the first call with art.com to where we're at today. We went out to the site and surveyed the location and found out that there used to be the Seibel signs out there. Our structural engineer went out and they surveyed the existing structure. We got the as-built drawings from Heinz, the owner of the building. And in fact, what we're proposing tonight is slightly bigger than what the Seibel sign was. It will fit on the existing structure without any modification. So, we felt it was appropriate, you know, we can fit the new sign in the space and it's not going to be too much different than the old one. We got into, our design department got into a conversation of, okay, well, this is a Class A trophy building right next to 80, probably the highest traffic count in the Bay Area. What's going to do it justice? I mean, what's going to be special that's going to serve the building and the brand, art.com? And Yesco is an LED manufacturer that's part of our business. And we thought, well, we have this smart puck technology, which is basically LED pixel that's programmable. If you're coming 80 eastbound in, from San Francisco, the big Coca-Cola board, that's our technology. So, we can program it. We can turn the Coke sign blue. We can do whatever we want with it. It's basically a computer network. And each one of these little pucks has its own IP address and that's how we program it. So, we thought, wow, that'd be pretty cool if the art.com sign at will could change colors. Like, it's Halloween, it's orange. If it's Breast Cancer Awareness Week, it's pink. If it's, you know, whatever, we can do whatever we want. So, I have a very short animation of, let's see, where is it? Oh, here it is. So, this is a minute and 12 seconds of what the sign could potentially do. It's not saying that, hey, this is what we want to do, but this just kind of gives you an idea of what I'm talking about. So, it can go, it can go static, color to color. Or we can bleed it on and off. We can have the color change from top to bottom, side to side. Basically, we can control the thing like a video screen. So, it has a lot of capabilities. There's one really cool little piece right at the end that we thought, the American flag on 4th of July or Veterans Day or Memorial Day. We thought that that would be the one, you know, really cool animated, if you will, image of the flag waving. And that's pretty much what it does, so. So, that's how we got to this design and proposing the programmable LED and in discussions of, you know, 14 by 48 digital billboard changes every 12 seconds at, you know, basically traffic level. And that's per the Caltrans ordinance. So, what we'd like to do is subtly change the color over the period of hours, you know? And we can slow it down or speed it up. But that was the discussions that we had with art.com and with the owner. You know, they're like, hey, don't turn this into a casino, you know? This is a really expensive building that you're putting this thing on. And so, yeah, we agree that we would agree with the owner prior to any kind of animation or color change or anything like that. We would develop same animation I just showed you of what it would do. They would approve it and that's what we want to do.
So, can you be any more specific about the kind of discussions you've had about, aside from it not looking like a casino? I mean, have you been talking about color changing, you know, the duration of the color or the, how that would work?
Well, it's, they would like, they agreed to the flag. They agreed to the holidays being different colors at holidays. And they also said, hey, we're open to the sign changing color. Show us exactly what you want it to do over what period of time and we'll look at it and talk about it. So, we haven't got into, here it is exactly.
So, are there other questions for?
In terms of the lumens of the LED, they're a lot brighter than, say, a sign cabinet. Is there anything in the Bay Area, you said the Coke sign?
The Coke sign.
That's a little more subtle that has that as well? Because Coke signs are really bright.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, compared to neon, and we can also dim it too. I mean, it has dimming capabilities too. All the LED boards that you see on the freeway, those all have dimmers on them.
Right. They're just solid board and there's, yeah, this is a little bit more subtle.
Right.
But they are dimmable.
Yeah, the LEDs are dimmable. This is dimmable. The, all the LED boards on the freeway is dim at night, so you're not blinded. So, this has the same capability. So, we can turn it down to whatever lumens we want.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, it's a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Don't see anybody coming up, so I closed the public hearing. Okay, what is the, what are our thoughts here?
I'm concerned about the casino look of the sign, especially from PPP. So, I think the technology is fantastic, but I am concerned. And I think what the, what staff came up with is kind of a brilliant solution for it. I might just add a little bit of flexibility to that and maybe if there's something that could be administratively approved for a special event or something like that, I don't know if I'm opening can of worms here, but, but just, I would like to see it installed as is written here. I have no problems with the text and the height and the square footage and all that. I think that's fine. I'm just concerned about the dynamics of the sign. So, I guess I would, I like what staff has come up with. I'd like to add just a little bit more flexibility that says, maybe somehow in special cases or something, you could try or get approval for 4th of July, we have the flag showing or something like that. But it would have to be something that would have to get some sort of special approval.
Well, I agree with you. I live at the very western edge of Watergate and I look at this moving sign that's on the approach to the Bay Bridge on the Oakland side, and it's very distracting. I mean, your eyes immediately drawn to it. And, you know, it's so different from everything else. All the other lights are white. And suddenly, this thing is flickering. It's a long way off. It's probably a mile and a half away, but it still draws your attention to it. I think that they should be just strictly white letters and let it go at that. But I don't see any reason for changing the colors. If everybody doesn't agree with me, I think then the staff's recommendation of keeping it one color for 24 hours helps, but I'd prefer to see it white because when you look down, most of the lights you see in buildings and along the road are always white. And it doesn't distract your eye. And that's why I'd like to recommend they stay white.
I actually think the technology is really interesting and that if it's done subtly, it could be something that's not distracting, but that is very cool, actually. And I'm trying to think of a way that it could be regulated so that it, I don't want to see something animated. And people who have heard me on the commission before know that I really, really dislike the electronic billboards. I dislike the bright lights on the other building down there. The bright red on the hotel, I think, is atrocious. But I think that this has the potential to do some really subtle, very interesting things. And I don't know whether anybody else has an idea of how to regulate it so that it doesn't get out of hand.
Well, I think the staff recommendation is a compromise between, I think, what you're saying and what Buzz is saying. And I would endorse that. I think it is a cool technology, especially if you look across the street at IKEA and some of the things happening in Bay Street, which is a bit garish and casino-like. This is a lot more elegant, in my opinion. So, I would endorse what you're saying and also endorse what the staff has recommended as a solution.
I like the idea of it changing colors once, you know, a day, 24-hour period. I think it'd be interesting.
I think it'd be interesting. I am hesitant about how bright LEDs are, so I'm very happy to hear that they can be dimmed. And I think that we would need to have a condition of approval if there was any complaints about it being too bright, that that would need to be toned down. And I kind of like what John was talking about, where maybe just for a few special occasions, we could, you know, have a rainbow thing or a flag or something. So, again, that may be a can of worms, but maybe that would just be a special use, a special occasion. What would that, how would you do that?
Charlie had the great idea of limiting it to a certain number of times per year so we could administratively approve. And I would like specification on whether it'd be animated or static, what's allowed, things like that. You know, obviously, a waving flag is different than a print, let's hold still. So, we'd like to get direction on that. But we could say four times a year, they're allowed to display something different than the 24-hour rotation of colors, something like that.
And I would very much say no animation. I'm clear about that on my part.
No animation? You mean like the waving American flag and that kind of thing?
Correct.
I would agree with that.
What's the 20, what's the four days a year special?
Well, it's up to them, perhaps.
Well, there's this whole rainbow example, right?
Oh, changing the colors in each letter.
Or it could be a red, white, and blue thing, but it just wouldn't be waving around.
Oh, okay.
Okay, may I suggest that if the majority of the commission wants to do this, we could have a condition that they can have for four 24-hour periods a year, they could have something other than solid colors, not including illumination, that they will.
Not including animation.
Not including animation. What did I say? Illumination? Oh, sorry, animation. That they would submit to staff first. We would review it, you know, determine if we thought it was reasonable, appropriate, and so forth, and then approve it for that one time, four times a year. Up to, I mean, each of the four times a year could be different.
I think that sounds like a great solution.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to these quarterly previews.
So, is there a motion, then?
I'll show move.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call the rule.
Okay.
Commissioner Steinberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Five ayes. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. That's all we have on the agenda, aside from Commissioners' comments. Is there anyone wanting to make a comment?
Buzz's motion.
All right, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, good.
Not too bad.